Of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. And I see we have six of seven members here thus establishing a quorum. You have all received the posted meeting agenda. We have one addition which I think you've been informed of which is the sign at the soon to be former Stop &amp; Shop to be converted to TOPS. So that's the addition to the posted agenda. Have you all received the Planning Consultants' Meeting Notes?
Yes.
May I have a motion to accept them as submitted? And you also have received the addendum.
Yes.
So may I have a motion to accept the addendum?
Done.
Moved by Edna and seconded by Woody. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of July 18th. I didn't get those. I didn't get those. I don't recall getting those.
I am getting those either.
None of us recall.
Not received.
Hmm?
When?
Well, in the absence of the opportunity of the Board to review them, we'll postpone the acceptance of the minutes and if we all overlook them, that's...
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Yep, anyway.
Unfortunately...
Yep, they were transmitted on the eighth to you and Melody. They're someplace up there in the cloud.
Okay. All right, so...
Anyway, I'm gonna make a comment about Gretchen's work. First set of minutes, in my opening line in transmitting the minutes that I have reviewed, your draft's minutes were easy to review and edit. Excellent job.
Thank you. Minutes are, for the benefit of the public, minutes are hard to turn around and some of you have been sitting at these meetings, know how long the meetings are, so the minutes are not quickly done and quickly processed. So we appreciate Gretchen's jumping right into it for the first time, so thank you. The correspondence and announcements, including status of the zoning law revision.
The big news, the good news, is that the Town Board, as you know, passed a proposed local law, passed Local Law Number Five, the zoning amendments back in July...
Yes, please.
It's very hard to hear, man. The Town Board adopted Local Law Number Five, the Town Code amendments, amendments to the zoning code, as well as the repeal of the redundant Historic Preservation Section, Chapter 78. That was adopted on July 25th. The filing occurred with the Department of State, was accepted by the Department of State on August 8th, which means that as of August 8th, those new amendments are in place. And among other technical considerations, the adoption of those amendments did result in a modification in the close of agenda schedule for this particular board. The close of agenda, and I know that Gretchen put out a revised schedule, the close of agenda is now three weeks prior to the meeting instead of two weeks prior to the meeting. All applications have to be submitted into the ZEO's office three weeks beforehand with the understanding that then allows a one-week window for the ZEO to review the applications for adequacy and to then forward them to the Planning Board.
So it gives a little more turnaround time in the zoning office to make sure that it's proper, and it gives Art a little more time as well. All right, looking ahead and looking at the inflow of applications, you know, we had four pre-application meetings this afternoon. It's the opinion of Art and I that we would be wise to schedule a second meeting for October, which would fall on October 3rd. Should we get to the regularly scheduled September meeting of the 19th, and should we see a significant drop-off in activity, we are free to cancel that. But I'd like you all to get it on your calendars, and could I have a motion to schedule a special meeting for October 3rd?
So moved.
So moved by Edna, seconded by Jesse. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to 6:35 in our first public hearing of the evening. This is the Rhinebeck Gardens Group LLC Garden Way, Special Use Permits, Wetlands Permit and Site Plan Approval. This is a continuation from the July 18, 2016, meeting of the Conduct of Combined Public Hearing on Applications for Amendments to Special Use Permits, Wetlands Permit and Site Plan Approval, granted by the Planning Board on September 19, 2011, in the matters of Phase Three of Gardens at Rhinebeck, then consisting of 92 residential condominium-type dwelling units and associated site improvements on a 24.45-acre tax map parcel listed within the Rural Agricultural District and the Town's LWRA, and now reduced to 76 dwelling units with the same aggregate bedroom count of 159, and continuing to be the third and final phase of the overall gardens at Rhinebeck being classified as an unlisted action under S.E.C.R. All right, I don't think we have to go over anything before turning it over to you, Chris.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Christopher Lapine with the Chasen Companies. We were here before you in July. We have since responded to comments provided from your consultants, as well as comments that were rendered during the public hearing, which were germane to the application. We resubmitted those. We'd also like, before we continue on with the public hearing, to have the opportunity just to kind of reflect on the application itself. This is a project that was previously approved in 2011.
Could you please speak more directly into the mic?
This was a project that was previously approved in 2011. It went through a negative deck, its site plan approval. We obtained Board of Health approval from the Department of Health. We obtained our DEC Construction Speedies permit to initiate construction. The notice of intent was actually filed for this project, and some work did take place. There was utility work that's already been installed. 2015, the applicant came in for an amended approval to modify some of their N-units to make them C-units, which were just one-bedroom units. The proposal before you now is just for a reduction in the units, from 96 down to 72. The environmental impacts associated with the original project were scrutinized under both approvals. We're here merely to discuss the amendment to the architecture and footprint of the building, the reduction in the number of buildings, and the incorporation of a pond for aesthetics reasons. We believe a number of items that were brought up during the last public hearing were discussed in detail during the review of Phase Three in 2011 and 2015, none of which changed or part of this application. We believe what we're doing here is an improvement upon the plan that's approved to be built. They have the right to build the plan that's already existing. So the amendments that were shown here tonight, we're seeking the approval for, but in the event we don't get the approval, the Phase Three plan that was previously approved is what will be built. It's got a larger disturbance than what the current plan is.
Is that a threat?
No, I'm just sharing with everybody what the...
That's like, that's a threat.
I just want...
Excuse me?
I'm sharing with everybody the process here...
Will be a moment for public comment.
As to...
Ask you to...
I have a problem.
Thank you.
I'm just sharing with everybody, is in the event that the current plan that's before you is not approved, they still have the right to build what was approved for Phase Three.
Let me interrupt you for one second and tell you that I do have a note here that the referral, we heard from the county on July 20th, and established as we anticipated that it would be a matter of local concern.
Okay.
Did you already think that we could get a red...
We are required, this project was referred to county planning. They have 30 days to respond, and we heard back from them on July 20th, and their determination was that it was a matter of local concern, which means they will not review it and they will not offer comment.
What I'd like to do is I'd like to walk through the changes that we did make to our site plans. I'm gonna bring up a number of plans here, just so that everybody could see. In terms of the landscaping, we incorporated additional coniferous screening along the roadway, along Roadway B at the entryway, and along to the rear of Unit 42, there was some mention that, you know, we didn't wanna, we wanted to try to obscure as much of the units as we could. Previously, if I could just bear with me, I just wanna take this one off here. This was the area where we had all these units around here in the previous approval. Under this approval, we've eliminated those three. We have this unit here, and now this is a pond for aesthetics, and we've incorporated some additional landscaping here and here to try to block the view of these dwellings. I've also, for the purposes of this, I know it's a little tough to see, but I did bring a Mylar here because there was a concern about a reduction in landscaping. And if you were to take the old plan and the new plan and kind of do an overlay, you'll see the trees all fall in the same places except if a dwelling was sitting on top of a tree here, this tree got shifted outwards. So we ended up with the same number of trees, same number of shrubs as what was previously approved, except over here, we've added six additional trees and the aquatic landscaping associated with the pond. There were some comments generated by the town engineering consultant about building in close proximity or building on the setback line. So for Buildings 57 and 58, we've provided a three-foot setback from the building setback at the request of the town engineer. For Buildings 54 and 55, we've shown a one-and-a-half-foot setback from the landscape buffer line to the patios and the deck area. There is a comment about Building 46 and 48 being located within a drain adjustment. That drain adjustment was on filed maps but never recorded. And the purpose of that drain adjustment was, for the benefit at one point in 1986, there was a pond that was proposed all the way in this area. Let me see this. This is the original conceptual layout back in 1988. This showed the entire detention bomb located within the confines of what's now most of you have known as the wetland there. Under this scenario here, the wetland was removed from the entire project. This detention pond here was never built, never proposed to be built in 2004, never proposed to be built 2011 or 2015. The means and mechanisms of managing stormwater has since changed. It's no longer collect and treat downstream, it's collect at the source and treat at the source, so that you can mimic hydrology. There were questions raised about, as it related to the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. The town engineer wanted a copy of the permit that was issued to the gardens at Rhinebeck. I've provided that to the town. The town engineer wanted a copy of the original notice of intent that was filed. I provided that to the town as well. There was a question on lighting that was raised. The lighting for Phase Three as it is now in the amended plans is the same as the lighting as it was in the approved plans in 2011 and revised in 2015. It's the same luminaire that Mr. Silver discussed with the neighborhood back then. He has not changed it. It's LED-focused, it's focused downward, it meets the town's requirements in terms of maximum height is 15 feet, the light proposed is 14.7 feet to the luminaire. There is no, the foot candles are zero, zero foot candles at any of the residential properties to the north of the site, and residential properties, that being Phase Two, to the south, and Phase One to the south. What we do have, where we exceed zero foot candles at the property line, and it's miniscule, we go up to .6-foot candles at the entryway to the facilities. We fluctuate from 0.1 down to 0.6. So recommended you go at least three or four. Town Code says zero at the property line, but we gave them just a little bit so you could see the entryway. Because we knew lighting was a concern of the neighbors, we revisited it and even drew it down more in terms of the foot candles here. There were concerns raised about the increase in population or increase in schoolchildren as a result of the modified design here. We did our independent analysis, and I know the town did their independent analysis. We determined with the reduction in units and conversion from the ones to the two-bedrooms that we're gonna decrease the overall population by 17 individuals. However, we resulted in an increase of one potential schoolchild as a result of the modifications we've made here. I don't know the findings of the town, but...
I can interject right now. Our findings, or my findings, are using accepted planning standards, almost, very comparable to yours.
Okay.
I see a reduction in resident population by 18 instead of 17. I see a potential increase in schoolchildren by three instead of one. In both cases, those are negligible modifications or negligible changes.
Perfect. Thank you. There were also comments raised regarding the ability of the members of Phase Three to utilize the clubhouse. What we presented to the town were copies of the agreements that were voted on by the members of Phase One when they allowed both Phase Two and Phase Three to enter in, the amount of money that had to be paid to accommodate those additional members joining the club, and also the additional improvements that were done to the recreational building at the tune of $95,000 by the gardens at Rhinebeck. That was part of the whole agreement that was made with the representatives of the HOA at that time in Phase One. I provided to the Board copies of the agreement and copies of the confirmation of the vote for that.
Just to clarify the...
Please.
...Rhinbeck Gardens Group. And...
Say that again, please?
It was the Rhinebeck Gardens Group that rendered all the improvements to the community center, which is the app.
And as I stated last month, there was an oversight when we included in some locations the refuse enclosure areas, they were eliminated from the plans that you have before you. So it's kind of a executive summary of what we resubmitted to the Town, and then I open it up for questions.
All right, do we have questions from members of the Planning Board?
One other thing we did do at your request. We brought a set of plans to the recreational center, including the elevations that were requested. We brought an additional set of plans and elevations to the sales office as well for everybody to take a look at, and as well as the additional copies we brought to the Town.
Thank you. All right, I would...
Quick question. The number of units altogether in this Phase Three is how many?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six, I'm sorry, seventy-six.
And they're all three-bedroom or two...
Combination of three-bedroom and two-bedroom. There are seven three-bedroom, and there are 69 two-bedroom.
And how many three-bedroom?
Seven.
Seven three-bedroom, and of those, you think only one or three are gonna have a kid in those bedrooms? What's that based on?
I'll tell you what my analysis is based on. The Center for Urban Policy Studies at Rutgers has historically presented, provided demographic data for use by planning consultants and others in analyzing the impact of, demographic impacts on projects. In this particular case, by going from 92 units to 76 units of the size that are now proposed, there's a reduction in the resident population here that would be occurring in Phase Three, from 177 persons to 159 persons. By reducing the number of units from 92 to 76, but increasing the bedroom count of certain of those units, there'll be a potential increase in school-aged children within the development from 12 to 15. Those would be the school-aged children who would be educated by either the public school system and/or private schools. So that's what the analysis is based upon.
The other thing that I would add is when we were reviewing all of the information regarding the Thompson Mazzarella Park, there was a lot of discussion that took place about the number of children in the community, whether that was on the rise, whether it was on the decline, and that was related to the conversations about how many softball fields, how many soccer fields. In other words, what was the size of the youth population in the town and how would that drive that plan? Now, that information is a couple years old, but at the time, the information we received was that the school-aged population was declining in the local schools, that there were fewer kids enrolling. So I can't state that that is 100% accurate now, but that had been the trend.
All right, so that's factored in with this...
It's not factored into his study, but it's an additional piece of information that I would share. So, I mean, we could continue it further and balance that off. If the population is declining or the enrollment is declining, then the offset...
It's just that it seemed like it was so many three-bedroom units, and I...
The clarification I should have provided, Eric, and I didn't, is that the demographic multipliers I referred to exist by housing type. They're very different for high-rise apartments, garden apartments, town homes, multiple-family developments such as this, or single-family homes. In the case of a three-bedroom unit, if you think in terms of a freestanding single-family home, I believe the multiplier is 1.3 or something per unit. In terms of a multiple-family development, it's .532. So it's substantially lower.
So what is the, I mean, what are all these bedrooms to be used for?
People are sleeping.
Well, there aren't, you know...
Well, people use three-bedroom units...
Yeah, they're not supporting school-aged children.
All right, I'm sorry, they're not what?
They're not being used by school-aged children.
Who says that?
The demographic studies that were independently done. Mr. Lapine was responsible for an independent demographic study, and Art, as our planning consultant, was also asked to do a second independent study. And what we related earlier was within one or two numbers, they had consistent results.
The other thing, Eric, is you said, "What are all these bedrooms being used for?" In fact, there are only, let's see, 159 total bedrooms in Phase Three. There are 69 two-bedroom units and seven-three, so there are only 159 bedrooms. And we are saying that there are 177 persons in that development, potentially in that development.
All right, other questions from the Board members? All right, at this point, I would like to open it up to the public. I would remind you that you need to come to the microphone, you need to introduce yourself. I would encourage you, because it's been a long, hot week, and we have a lot of public hearings ahead of us, to state your comments as succinctly and politely as you can. And if the comment's already been made, I would encourage you to skip to somebody who's making a different comment, and then we'll circle back to you. So, first up, gentlemen?
That'd be great. Oh, that's fantastic. Thanks so much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Gil Eniger, and I'm a resident in Phase Two, in the Phase Two development of the gardens. But I'd like to start off tonight asking the following question to everyone that's assembled here. Does anybody remember the TV show Columbo? Yes, do you? Nobody on the board? No? I guess you guys work too hard. Well, I'm not feeling, I'm not wearing his signature trench coat, nor am I holding his classic cigar. I'm feeling a Peter Falk moment to reflect on a few observations with regard to this project, okay? After the most recent 2016 March Home and May Site drawings submissions, did the Chasen Companies deviate from the previous approved plans by the following? By reducing the number of the units to be constructed? By changing the architectural style of the units? By changing and enlarging the square footage along with the floor plan modifications for the original units, which is now a mast, each one will have a master on the ground floor? By eliminating the one-bedroom option? By adding a new three-bedroom option with a two-car garage, which I would personally love to have, okay? By repositioning one or more of the four-unit structures shown on Page One, which I believe is this one right here, it was turned over here. That was told to us at the May meeting in the vestibule by Mr. Lapine. Also, by moving at least one four-unit structure to an entirely new location, which is located on Page Two, and I'll show you on the map, which is this one right, this one right here. And that was noted to the Planning Board members who attended the 620 walking tour, all right? I think the answer to majority or all of the above is yes. Most, if not all, the aforementioned deviations could also be considered by some as a good thing, all right? However, and I really mean however, with all of the changes and probably more, including the possible use of individual ground propane tanks, which we didn't talk about tonight for heating, that we first learned about at last month's meeting to the original design and footprint, the Planning Board should be looking at this current 2016 presentation as really as a new project, and that simply is just an add-on, okay? The only constant throughout this whole entire plan is the Chasen's Company undaunted determination to eradicate the forest that we talked about at the last meeting. That also happens to have, and I'm not sure if they know that, it's surrounded a six-to-seven foot above-ground boulder, okay, as noted on Pages Three and Four of the photo submissions. Now, let me ask you, how do you think they're gonna get rid of this boulder? With a hammer and chisel? No, I don't think so. I think they're gonna come with a bobcat, with a pneumatic hammer, probably at 7 o'clock in the morning when they can start the work, or better yet, let's use controlled explosives, okay? There'll be three beeps and that'll be done. But instead of using some conjecture, hopefully Mr. Lapine, an associate, and he's a director of land development with the Chasen's Company, will tell us tonight his proposed method of demolition of that rock, all right? Better yet, they could design a roundabout similar to the ones used at Vassar College and on Route 55 in La Grangeville. On his Chasen business card, it states, "Mr. Lapine holds the prestigious L-E-E-D certification." I know the Board knows what that is, but for everyone else, it's "Leadership and Energy and Environmental Design," and I'm gonna repeat that, "Leadership and Energy and Environmental Design." The Chasen Companies should live up to the ideals of the Aubrey Day Foundation, which I spoke... which I spoke about, Rhinebeck's association with the Nebraska-based organization at last month's meeting. By, only by acting as a true steward of the land, Rhinebeck and all three phases of the garden could the Chasens Companies embody the true meaning of their certification as a leader in environmental design. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, would you like to speak, or do you want me to continue with the public hearing?
Can I ask a question regarding that at this time, or should we wait?
Why don't you let Chris make his remarks, and then we'll follow up. And if you have additional questions, we'll go in that direction.
Thank you.
Perhaps his remarks will answer your question.
That'd be good.
One of the items we were asked by the town engineer to provide you was a color overlay of our proposed plan and what the previous plan was. Just to comment on that. There is a dwelling proposed here, Dwelling Sixty. You could see it in red. We also proposed a Dwelling Sixty here in the prior approval. That's in black. It was just commented that there was no dwelling there before. There was a comment generated just now that, in this location, Building Forty-Two, which was shown in red, there was never a building before. I stand here to tell you that Building Forty-Two was proposed here before, along this roadway, as shown in this plan. With regards to the comment about lead accreditation and taking those characteristics and items in which we learned through the accreditation into account when designing your plans, I ask you to go take a look at Phase One and Phase Two of the gardens at Rhinebeck. And I ask you to take a look at all the roadways, where everything flows into catch basins. Everything's piped out to ponds. And what you have is this old-school network, which doesn't follow the lead accreditation. What you've seen here is we've incorporated matters where we reduced the roadway width. Anywhere else you look in Phase One or Two, you're going to have these twenty-six, twenty-eight-foot-wide roadways. We went down to twenty-four. We discussed that with the fire department, we discussed that with the planning board. Why add more impervious area when you don't need it? It's not lead. We then took it a step further. We took all the runoff associated with our project, and instead of incorporating curb lines or gutters, no, we ran the sheet flow that into the grass area, where it'll continue to percolate into the ground. And as it percolated into the ground, the amount of volume that was ultimately discharging off the site was decreasing. So when we captured it, we captured these landscaped areas, bioretention areas, which further treated the runoff. And then we discharged it overland into the existing wetland. Let's go back to an earlier photo that I showed you. It's discharged by overland flow. There's an overflow where on the bioretention areas in some locations, and some locations where the weir can't handle it, there's an additional pipe. But let me show you what was originally proposed. A pond, wiping out the entire wetland. You're correct. That is not lead accredited, and that's not someone that cares when they're doing their design. That's not me, that's not the Chasens Companies. The grading that you see on the site is no different than the grading that you had before. There's no intentions on using explosives here. They removed the rock last time either by hammering, or in some cases, it wasn't blasting, it was just hammering. Or if it was a large enough boulder, they picked it up and physically removed it. There was no blasting operations associated with Phase Two while I was involved in it, and there's certainly no blasting operations associated with Phase Three. Just trying to see if there's anything else that I might have overlooked here in your questions, but I think I may have answered some of the questions you raised.
We'll keep going. Eric?
The boulder and the trees that are going to be removed under the proposed Phase Three, were they going to be removed under the original 2011 phase?
Yes, and the one change we did make, we'd said at the meeting, and I believe I've got this reflected on my landscaping plan. We worked out at our community meeting back in May, and I, Woody, you were there for this, and so was the CAC, and they're not here now, but there was a comment, "We would like you to save the cedar trees in the back of the existing Building Fifty." Can you find a way to save them as opposed to eliminate them this time? So that's what we did. We saved them. And that's shown on our plan. So that's a change from what our last plan is. We've saved three additional trees.
And is there any way to save the trees that are presently slated for removal under the new plan?
Some of the most significant trees are right here in the roadway. And they're right here where this building is. They're the same trees we anticipated on removing in 2011, 2015, and now. We don't have the ability to run a road up the middle of the Army Corps wetland. But we have supplemented it with an abundance of trees for the landscaping plan.
Thank you. You may come to the microphone.
Oh.
Well, you know, it's important that your question be recorded, because this is a public hearing and people will watch this at home. So I'd like people to come up and, you know, speak into the microphone and identify themselves. Okay. Anyone else from, Susan? And I'll get to you. No, Susan's going first tonight.
I own a house on...
Please identify yourself.
Susan Coff, 167 River Road. I own a house, 209 Reincliff Road. So I haven't been oriented on this. Not sure what... I haven't been oriented on this map. Hello? Okay? Sorry. Susan Coff, 167 River Road. I own a house on Reincliff Road. I haven't been oriented on this map as to where it is, but you said something about the water being sent in an area away from where the houses are, off the roads, into the landscaped area. The back of my house happens to be a very wet area, and it borders on this property over here. And I'm wondering if there are any mechanisms being put in place to prevent increased runoff into that wet area that borders where, not just my house, but all of those houses along Reincliff Road are. If you could answer that, please?
Reincliff Road in...
Three oh eight.
Yeah, this project right here doesn't... This project doesn't...
Does not, doesn't a but, doesn't a but?
Three oh eight.
Okay.
We had done some improvements as part of Phase Two for one homeowner. I'm trying to remember what the gentleman's name was.
Mr. Gay.
I'm sorry?
Wayne Gay.
Wayne Gay.
Wayne Gay. Yes. He had come to the meetings and we had tried to do some improvements.
Trust my neighbor? Oh, oh, okay.
And that was a few years back when Phase Two was under construction.
I see. If I have an issue, is it too late to bring it up? With them not here at the public hearing, but to discuss it? Because that's my neighbor, actually, and I never thought...
Need to make your comments now, because we have draft resolutions before us for later.
Well, it doesn't really apply to this phase that he's doing now.
Okay, then now you can...
So then I would say not.
Chris, you're saying there's no relationship between stormwater from Phase Three and that particular location?
No, that was, that abutted Phase Two, Mr. Gay's property, and he was actually in a localized point, and he had drainage from Route Three oh eight that was actually discharging onto his property as well, so...
Okay. One other question, since I have a home on River Road, and River Road does face, probably, Phase Three. And I'm wondering if this construction that you're doing is going to change the visual aspect on River Road when you look east? Are you removing trees that would cover up the construction in some way? Or are you planting new trees? Is there going to be any modification of that view shed from River Road looking east?
I'd say a majority of the mature trees that are being removed happen to be in this area here. There are some mature trees beyond our landscape buffer in the central, right on the edges of the Central Hudson corridor. The buffer that we planted in here isn't being disturbed, those particular trees, so... It's over here. It's not surveyed on the map, but it's, we've got a few properties between us. So, I mean, you do have a number of residents. Then you have the Central Hudson property. Then you have the landscape buffer on our property, and then... So I'd say within the first five-hundred feet, six-hundred feet, if there are any existing trees there, they're not being removed, it's not our property.
In this new proposed Phase Three, will there be more, less, or the same amount of runoff from the property onto adjacent properties?
It'll be approximately the same.
So no change from what was approved?
No change from the Phase Three.
Very good, thank you.
And the previous Phase Three reduced it from what was originally contemplated back when they did the original EIS for this project?
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Hey, hi, my name is Peter Ilani, I'm at Forty-Eight River Road. I have more property line with Phase Two and a bit of Three than anybody else here. We've got about eleven-hundred feet. Moved here 2004, was nothing there. Few years later, they started building. Half, when it was half-done, it was stopped. For years, we were looking at their site. We tried to sell our house. Buyers were coming down the drive, we're turning around and going back. They were so bad. So now, we have very nice development. They also helped us with the natural buffer, added trees to our property, did a great job. It increased the value for all our properties. No, no, it did theirs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Madeline Swirsky, I live in Phase Two at the gardens. I have a couple of questions. One was, can you tell me what a candle foot means? I don't understand that regarding the lighting. I'd appreciate it.
It's a measure of illumination of the lighting.
What does it mean in practical terms, in terms of other people seeing?
Point one, you're not going to see it. Zero, you're not going to see it. And if you're... In terms of point-one foot candles or zero-foot candles, it would be the illumination at the property line. So if you were standing here, you'd be looking down, seeing what light is actually being focused downward. And at this property line here, it's zero. This property line here is zero. This property line here is zero. All of this is zero. In-between the entrances are zero. At the entryways to the facility, it's between point-one and point-six. It's maybe like your nightlight is really what you're going to see in terms of the illumination.
My other question was, when you said there were, the renderings and the drawings were at the clubhouse and the sales office, are those the updated ones with the new landscaping?
The renderings, the building renderings are the most recent, and so are the landscaping plans. They're the most recent as well.
The other thing is not a question, it's just a comment. I know that's what was done, and it was approved by Phase One residents, which I view differently than a town board office making a decision, but it seems a little strange to me that Phase One residents made decisions for all of Phase Two and Phase Three residents regarding the clubhouse and them deciding that that was adequate. I'm just stating, it seems a little weird to me that the only people who benefited was the Phase One.
Right. Well, the other thing to point out, I just looked back, and I don't think that when the Phase One residents made their decisions back in 1987, they anticipated that the build-out would take thirty years. And that's a fact. The initial applications for this project came in in 1987. We've been looking at it nearly thirty years, so...
A generation.
A generation, a generation of people. And probably the people who voted on it in 1987 may not be residents there anymore. So, you know, I mean, this has been long and complicated, and it's had a lot of ups and downs. And we appreciate what you're saying. On the other hand, these folks came in and picked up, as the gentleman before said, a most unappealing development. And as many of you have noted, your property values were impacted for many, many years by what Phase Two and, the abandoned Phase Two looked like. So that's, who else would like to comment? Yes, sir?
My name's Anil Talan. Barb Lewis and I live on, at Eighty-Six River Road in Rhinebeck, facing...
Right there.
Tomorrow will be a month since the builder Magnus Reinckelt died. If any of you were at his memorial service, at his funeral, or at his wake, you'd have seen a whole town. Graders, foundation people, rough carpenters, finished carpenters, roofers, electricians, plumbers. The veterinarians were there. The core of Rhinebeck, they live in Rhinebeck. They're here. They're that town that made this town and lives now here in the town, was there. As I've mentioned before, the interior crew, the exterior crew, the landscape crew, man on hill. This is the, this was begun by the largest builder in the county. These are professional people whom we respect. No labor at all on this private job came close to speaking English or was a resident of the United States, okay? And when you ask, when you make a complaint, they hear it exactly, because they want no follow-up. That's a choice. But when we talk about community planning, it's one that I would bring before the board. Now, as I say, these are professional people. This is a very profitable project, and they have done it well. But we talk about those values that we hold in common. And within the boundaries and when there's difficult choices, we must deal with the facts, not the theories. The lighting is as Chris said, correct. The balconies, you remember, many of you were here on this board when the balconies were decided 2011 at the end of the meeting, and David Silver said, "These are all be old retired people." Remember that? And that passed, and we agreed. But the fact is, as we've noted in all the meetings, with loud and changing sense of community than the quiet were once held. That's the one. And this increases, I think, I'm sorry, I don't know, I'm sorry. This increases the number of balconies that, on the ones closest to the property line, back from the, set back by a foot and a half. That's a change, and we deal with the fact of that change. The second is about landscape buffers. Those landscape buffers were agreed to and planned. And in the lateral aggregate here, we saw that their landscape buffer shielding Phase Two was correct every ten feet, a living, perfect tonneau, well-planned and well-executed. All of our two tonneauxes barely surviving sixty feet apart. That's a differential in fact, in performance. That would my second point. And then the third would be the wetlands. We came here after Hurricane Irene in 2011, when we were all flooded out on River Road. And Ms. Swirsky had said, "When you throw a weak ball, the water doesn't pour, doesn't leave." There's been superb planning here, but we will have to deal with the fact of that. And the performance bonds, those performance bonds will address us if we have an increased flooding. So that's just, again, these are large questions. But the performance of the builder, our landscape buffers, and the fact on the ground of increased balconies and open space are questions when those balconies are right on the property line for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You may. You may.
I'm Noel Smith. Am I correct that this plan is 30 years old?
Nearly.
I gotta tell you, you guys do your best job here. I appreciate your, your public spirit and effort. I find it unconscionable that you are allowing a 30-year-old plan, given, with its changes.
No, 2011 was this?
Is this plan?
2011. You are still not, from what I understand, and I really apologize for coming a half hour late, I understand the demographic thing was near and dear to my heart, and it got covered already, but from what I understand, asking a quick question, the demographics are about the people who live here. Am I right? No?
Or who are projected to live.
Who are projected to live here. And those are people who will be here 24/7, 365, like, set up a family here?
Necessarily.
No, not necessarily. You didn't tell me the truth. Then I have nothing else to say. Because my point is, they're weekenders here, and they have kids that come here. And while they're not here during the week, they're here in the summertime, they're here on the weekend, the stress on unintended consequences in infrastructure is something that I don't know that has been dealt with enough. And I'm gonna say no more, 'cause I came late and I have no axe to grind here. Thank you.
Thank you. And to clarify your point, what my point was, development at The Gardens in Phase One is 30 years old. The application before us and the phase before us was, came much later. And times changed dramatically from the initiation of Phase One to where we are today. Does that answer the question?
That's inaccurate.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Anything further from the planning board? All right, I...
Do you want to try to do this after the, after the rest of the public hearings?
Again. What, you wanna make them wait?
Might be reasonable to do.
You wanna make them wait?
I guess not.
I don't think that's gonna get us anywhere.
No, that's okay.
So we have before us a draft SEACER resolution and an approvals resolution, and unless...
I think I might have a question from the boards. Are there reasonable board leaders? Should not be approved this.
Has anything been, so you've all had a copy of the meeting notes. You know that these are, this is a notice determination of nonsignificance in our SEACER resolution, which would then be followed by an approvals resolution of the plan that was placed before us.
I just wanna ask, I wanna reiterate this and just make sure it's out there in front of everybody again. This is just approving changes from a previously approved 2011 resolution on this property.
That's correct.
That was approved, it was to go ahead, and we're just comparing changes now to what was approved then.
This is a modification of a previously approved application.
Technically, an amendment of an approved site plan.
Okay.
So it's an amendment of the approved site plan, and there are, even in the draft resolution, there are a couple of conditions that have been carried through from the prior approval that perhaps have already been satisfied in dealing with the town board, but we're leaving those conditions in. And when the plant town board tells us that recreation or affordable housing or those matters have been satisfied, they will have been addressed. But for purposes of the draft resolution, those have been retained as, as conditions as they were in the 2011 approval. Do you have an extra copy by any chance?
Sure, yeah, the resolution?
Yes.
So let me just ask my colleagues on the board. Have you heard anything this evening that would persuade you that we should not go ahead with the meeting notes and the resolutions as drafted by our planning consultant?
At your request.
At my request, at our request.
Board's request.
I've heard things that were definitely criticisms of the plan, but nothing that falls in line with what we just discussed about it being, it's already been approved, so that door is closed on those aspects of things, as far as I understand. So in that case, no, I haven't heard anything.
Jesse? Woody?
No.
Sharon? Edna?
No.
All right, then I will proceed with the reading of the draft SEACER resolution. Town of Reinbeck Planning Board, upon review and determination by the zoning enforcement officer and in its continuing role as designated lead agency, hereby access follows on a proposed action being an unlisted action under SEACER involving applications to the planning board by Reinbeck Gardens Group LLC for amendments to special use permits, wetlands permit, site plan approval granted by the planning board on September 19, 2011, in the matter of Phase Three of Gardens at Reinbeck, as then consisting of 92 residential condominium style condominium-type dwelling units, 25 one-bedroom units, and 67 two-bedroom units, and associated site improvements on a 24.45 acre tax map parcel listed within the rural agricultural RA district and the town's LWRA, and now reduced to 76 dwelling units, 69 two-bedroom and seven three-bedroom, in response to changing residential market conditions, calling for larger units, and continuing to have a total of 159 bedrooms, and being the third and final phase of the overall 166-acre Gardens at Reinbeck project. All is depicted on a 16-sheet set of site plan drawings entitled amended site plan Gardens at Reinbeck Phase Three, prepared by Chasen Engineering Land Surveying and Landscape Architecture PC and dated May 23, 2016, and revised to, and we'll fill in that date. Otherwise described in supporting documents, including a letter report entitled wetland permit for the Gardens at Reinbeck with attachments, a coastal assessment form, a report entitled Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, The Gardens at Reinbeck Phase Three, dated July 11, 2011, and last revised May 23, 2016, and a full EAF Part One dated July 12, 2016, and supplementary information since provided addressing technical review comments by the planning board engineer and by others concerning the potential impact of the proposed modifications on community facilities within Gardens at Reinbeck unit, and particularly in consideration of the larger units proposed on school district facilities. One, upon review of the full EAF Part One and its own completion of the annexed full EAF Part Two, in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth at Title VI, Part 6.17.7 CNYCRR, that the proposed action as described above will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment and thus issues a negative declaration determination of nonsignificance deeming an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chair to so execute the full EAF and directs the planning board clerk to distribute and file the executed determination of significance in the manner set forth within the SEACER implementing regulations Title VI, Part 6.17.12 NYCRR.
At the end of the opening paragraph, next to the last line, simply delete the word "unit." It's an extraneous word.
Okay. May I hear a motion on the draft SEACER resolution?
Don't move.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Woody. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And I'll vote aye. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So be it.
Moved by Woody, seconded by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? I can go ahead now and read the approvals resolution with Art's help in getting to the salient points.
Frankly, in this case, Melody, I think you probably need to read it all in terms of the community of interest.
Including the introductory?
You don't need to read opening, but Phase Three is...
Pursuant to a special use permit. Phase Three is proposed pursuant to a special use permit issued by the ZBA on February 13, 1987, and includes, in addition to the modifications subject of the present applications for amendment of the September 19, 2011 approvals, prior modifications in the conceptual site plan layout presented in 1987 to further mitigate and reduce previously disclosed environmental impacts so as to both comply with updated NYSDEC regulations and incorporate enhanced stormwater management measures as set forth within the latest NYSDEC General Permit and Design Manual to address enhanced wetland protection criteria set forth by the Town of Reinbeck through its December 2009 adoption of the Town Code Chapter 120 Wetlands. Phase Three is the subject of a 16-sheet set of site plan drawings entitled amended site plan Gardens at Reinbeck Phase Three, prepares by Chasen and dated May 23, 2016, and otherwise described in supporting documents, including a letter report entitled, and I have read that full paragraph. One, in the matter of application for amendment of the heretofore approved special use permits for Phase Two, A, finds the proposed work as modified to remain consistent with pertinent coastal policies set forth within the town's LWRP. B, finds the proposed work as modified to remain consistent to the extent applicable with the general standards for all special permit uses set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-67, and the more specific standards for the requested special use permits as set forth at Section 125-40 for development in your streams, rivers, wetlands, and other water bodies, and Section 128-68 and N for major excavation. C, reviews and amends the heretofore approved special use permits under the aforementioned Sections 125-40E and 125-68 and N in consideration of both the passage of a substantial period of time since the prior approval and the proposed work depicted and/or otherwise described within the aforementioned 16-sheet set of site plan drawings and the SWIP prepared by Chasen Engineering Land Surveying and Landscape Architecture PC and authorizes the zoning enforcement officer and/or building inspector to permit such work upon receipt of a copy of the amended site plan signed by the planning board chair. Two, in the matter of the application for amendment of the heretofore approved wetlands permit for Phase Three, A, finds the proposed work as modified to remain consistent with pertinent coastal policies set forth within the town's LWRP. B, further finds the proposed work as modified to remain consistent with the overall criteria established within Town Code Chapter 120 Wetlands. Where in disturbance within regulated areas is not prohibited, but measures are clearly stated requiring, as proposed within Phase Three, one, implementation and maintenance of stormwater management practices so that water quality impacts both short and long term are minimized to the greatest extent practicable, and two, installation of native plant species appropriate to the revegetation of disturbed regulated areas. C, renews and amends the heretofore approved wetlands permit in consideration of both the passage of a substantial period of time since the prior approval and the proposed work depicted and/or otherwise described within the aforementioned 16-sheet set of site plan drawings and the SWIP prepared by Chasen Engineering Land Surveying and Landscape Architecture PC and authorizes the ZEO and/or building inspector to permit such work upon receipt of a copy of the amended site plan signed by the planning board chair. Three, in the matter of the application for amendment of the heretofore granted site plan approval for Phase Three, A, finds the proposed work as modified to remain consistent with pertinent coastal policies set forth within the town's LWRP and the site layout, infrastructure, lighting, landscaping, and design principles set forth within Town Code Chapter 125 Zoning. B, renews and amends the heretofore granted site plan approval in consideration of both the passage of a substantial period of time since the prior approval and the proposed work depicted and/or otherwise described within the aforementioned 16-sheet set of site plan drawings and the SWIP prepared by Chasen Engineering Land Surveying and Landscape Architecture PC and the building layout and exterior architectural plans by Giovanni Palladino, and authorizes the ZEO and/or building inspector to permit such work upon receipt of a copy of the amended site plan signed by the planning board chair. Signing of the amended site plan by the planning board chair shall be preceded by the applicant's satisfaction of each of the following conditions and/or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. One, revision of the site plan drawings and/or SWIP to the satisfaction of the planning board engineer in consideration of technical comments offered in the Morris Associates' Review Memorandum of July such-and-such 2016. Two, submission of final site plan drawings, including the aforementioned drawings by Chasen, revised as may be required to be further revised to address the above cited technical comments by Morris Associates, or as may otherwise be required by the ZEO and those by Giovanni Palladino, and the number as may be modified by the chair in form specified in the town zoning law, or as may be modified by the chair in bearing thereupon all approvals, stamps, seals, signatures, and certifications. Three, payment of both, any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Reinbeck to costs incurred to date in the review and processing of this application and related applications for special use permits and wetlands permit, and those further costs incurred in the matter of satisfaction of the conditions and/or requirements of the resolution. Four, in consideration of the additional demand that will be placed on municipal recreation facilities due to the intended occupancy of 76 dwelling units within Phase Three, and the proximity of the project site to the Thompson Mazzarella Park where ongoing development of major town park is occurring under a phased master plan, a cash in lieu of payment, of land payment may be made, be made to the Town of Reinbeck for deposit in the town's Recreation Trust Fund and use in continuing development of Thompson Mazzarella Park. The amount of this payment to be set by the town board passed upon the uniform schedule in place at the time. All other conditions or requirements set forth within this resolution have been satisfied and by the Phase Three site plan, and the Phase Three site plan is otherwise ready for stamping and signing by the chair. Five, compliance as may be deemed applicable in the manner established by the town board with the requirements of the town's affordable housing program. Six, continued acknowledgement and writing by the applicant that accept as specifically amended as to the total number of dwelling units within Gardens at Reinbeck now intended to be 239 instead of 255. All other conditions, requirements, obligations of both the underlying February 10, 1987 special use permit remain applicable to this development. May I have a motion?
Don't move.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Jesse. I will poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Thank you very much. The motion passes. May I take the opportunity to compliment all of you who look at these projects and come forward and take the time to tell us what's on your mind? You may sometimes think it doesn't work out the way you want, but you do inform the process and you do help us to look more critically at what's before us. And thanks also to Chasen for continuing to try and improve this project so that it meets the high standards that we like to believe make Reinbeck what it is. So thank you to all of you.
Rich wanted me to apologize. He had to head to a public hearing in Red Hook at 8:00. And with regards to items four and five...
Can I hear you, please?
With regards to items four and five, do you want us to go back to the town board and give you confirmation that he handled it previously, or how?
Yeah, we, we had some, lack of clarity around that, so we...
So a letter?
Yeah.
Perhaps you have, perhaps you have a refund coming.
Yeah. Okay.
Please ask a brief question?
The public hearing is closed.
It's not yet closed, you haven't had...
I have closed the public hearing.
May I still ask a brief question? I have been to this for, since 2004, and I do...
I will, I will grant you, I, I will do want to state for the record that we voted to close the public hearing, so I'm giving you, and please, we have many, many more hours to go tonight, so...
I'll be very quick.
Thank you.
What do we do in the case of non-performance of the covenants that Chasen and the builder has, if, if, in the case of non-performance of the agreements that the builders, the applicants have agreed to? Specifically, the lack of a landscape buffer as promised between us and Phase Three?
You would, you would lodge a complaint with the zoning enforcement officer who would, who would follow up in terms of whether or not the plan is being executed as approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So now that it's 6:45, well...
6:40 now.
6:40, I'm sorry. It's even earlier than I thought. Next up, in terms of public hearings for this evening, is Renee Schmidt. 168 Hilltop Road Special Use Permit and Site Plan Approval. This is a continuation from July 18, 2016, of the conduct of combined public hearings on applications for special use permit, site plan review and approval in the matter of the construction of a 1,620 square-foot two-bedroom living quarters within an existing barn for interim use as a principal dwelling and subsequently as caretaker's apartment, and five accessory agricultural farm structures on a 98-acre tax map parcel listed within the rural countryside district, being the subject of an application for area variances within the purview of the ZBA and classified as an unlisted action under SEACER. We are in full compliance in terms of escrow and mailings and everything regarding this application. I don't think there's anything else we need to be looking for, as there are before we...
There was only one reason for, for causing this continuation, and that was that the ZBA had not yet acted on the requested area variances. The ZBA has since acted, I believe it was July 20. They acted to grant all the requested variances and attach no conditions to the, to that grant of variances except for the normal approvals before the planning board. Consequently, we might be able to keep this matter rather brief this evening. I would recommend that the board move forward at this point in time with the draft SEACER and draft approvals resolutions. The first meeting can be adopted prior to the close of the public hearing. The second can be adopted immediately after the close of the public hearing, or any time within 62 days of that occurrence. I don't think you'll use the 62 days.
Any questions?
Does the applicant have any? Renee is here this evening.
All right, we still have a public hearing open. Is there anyone... Is there anyone here wishing to comment on the Schmidt application? All right, then I'll proceed with the reading of the draft seeker resolution. Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby access follows on a proposed action being an unlisted action under seeker involving applications to the planning board by Renee Schmidt for special use permits, site plan approval in the matter of the construction of a sixteen-twenty square foot two-bedroom living quarters within existing barn for interim use as principal dwelling and subsequently as caretaker's apartment and five accessory agricultural farm structures. All is depicted on a site plan prepared by Paul Tyrms, P.E., and dated April twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen, and a second level living quarters four plan prepared by Mr. Tyrms dated January tenth, two thousand and sixteen, and otherwise described in supporting documents, including a short EAF Part One verified by John Imperato, agent on May second, two thousand and sixteen, and the application for area variances submitted to the ZBA on May second, and the related decision by the ZBA dated, and we'll fill in the blank. One, pursuant to its classification of the proposed action as an unlisted action under seeker and its determination to proceed independently with consideration of the proposed work without exercising the option for coordinated environmental quality review, determines upon review of the short EAF Part One and its own completion of the annexed short EAF Part Two in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth at Title VI, Part 617.7C NYCRR, that the proposed action as described above will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment, and thus issues a negative declaration deeming an environmental impact statement to not be required in stating such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chair to so execute the short EAF and directs the planning board clerk to distribute and file the executed determination of significance in the manner set forth within the seeker implementing regulations Title VI, Part 617.12 NYCRR. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by Edna. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I'll vote aye. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by...
Second.
Jesse. May I have, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And I'll vote aye. We have the approvals resolution.
You can miss the preamble. Preamble's the same with the exception of a line and subject of a negative declaration under seeker heretofore issued by the planning board.
Right. One, in accordance with the zoning enforcement officer's letter determination of May eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, in the matter of the application for special use permits, A. determines the proposed use to comply with the general standards for special permit uses set forth within Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-67. B. Approves the location of a detached accessory dwelling unit on the upper level of an existing barn storage building. C. Approves one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight square feet as the permitted square footage for the accessory dwelling unit instead of the maximum nine hundred square feet otherwise set forth within Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-68E. Approves, this is D., approves the proposed temporary designation of the accessory dwelling unit as the principal dwelling on the property with the understanding that this principal dwelling will be redesignated as an accessory dwelling unit duly inspected and related certificate of occupancy required as a prerequisite to the issuance of a COO for the principal dwelling Mr. Schmidt intends to construct on the property. E. Approves the construction of proposed accessory structures greater than three in number on the property and authorizes the zoning enforcement officer and/or building inspector, following receipt of the site plan stamped and signed by the planning board chair, to issue building permits as either or both may deem to be required for one or more of the proposed accessory structures. F. Authorizes zoning enforcement officer and/or building inspector to issue a building permit for the intended construction of the accessory dwelling unit upon receipt of documentation of design approval by the Duchess County Health Department and a site plan stamped inside, signed by the planning board chair. In the matter of the application for site plan review and approval, approves the application for site plan review and approval and authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within the next six calendar months. A. Submission of site plan and related living quarters four plan drawings in the number in form specified within Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-78 Subsection B, or as may be modified by the chair with such drawings bearing both all required stamps, seals, signatures, and certifications, and further required statement concerning the property's location within an agricultural district. B. Securing of design approval as cited above from the Duchess County Health Department for water supply and sanitary sewage facilities serving the accessory dwelling unit. C. Payment of any fees or reimbursable amounts due to town related to review and processing of both this application and the aforementioned application for special use permits. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Edna, seconded by Jesse, and I will poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Woody seems temporarily...
Woody steps out for temporarily.
And I'll...
Should be recorded as having stepped out temporarily.
Record that Woody stepped out of the meeting and I'll...
Was not present for discussion this night.
Was not present, and I vote aye. So, the motion carries with one person absent. Thank you very much. Thank you, Renee. Good luck. I don't see anybody for Keith Arndt here.
Technically, the Arndt application was continued for the same reason. Everything was in order, and you understood the ZBA to be in a favorable position, but the ZBA had not yet issued its decision. The ZBA, in this case, issued its decision on July twentieth. Technically, there is no further input required of the applicant, and the board could, could proceed this evening with the seeker and approval resolutions.
Let's do that.
All right. Let me first ask if there's anyone from the public here who wishes to comment on the Arndt application. All right. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby access follows on applications to the planning board but Keith Arndt for special use permits, certificate of demolition or removal, wetlands permit, and site plan review and approval, and to the ZBA for related area variances in the matter of proposed building improvements, including the demolition of an existing shed, chicken coop being a contributing structure, removal of an enclosed porch from the dwelling, and construction of a new roof on water well enclosure, a new garden shed, and a tractor barn slash workshop and related site improvements, all directly involving or otherwise accessory to an historic single-family dwelling, the Kip House on a five-point-six-nine-two acre tax map parcel listed within the Historic Preservation and Reincliff Overlay Districts, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District in the town's LWRA. All is depicted on site and architectural plans by Warren Temple Smith Architects and further subject of a negative declaration, determination of non-significance under seeker issued by the planning board on June twenty, two thousand and sixteen, and area variances deemed necessary by the ZEO and granted on the ZBA by the date to be filled in. One, deems the proposed work and continuing single-family residential use of the property to in no way contravene pertinent coastal policies set forth within the town's LWRP. Two, in the matter of the application for special permits, A. Finds the proposed work and intended use of the property to be consistent with the general standards for special permit uses set forth at Chapter 125, Section 125-67. B. Second further finds the proposed, proposed work, though located within one thousand feet of the Hudson River, and the continuing single-family residential use of the property, to have limited additional effect beyond the existing conditions on either the visual quality or environmental and ecological resources of this water resource, and thus authorizes issuance of the requested special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-40 Development Near Streams, Rivers, Wetlands, and Other Water Bodies, and Section 125-54 Water Resources Protection Overlay District. C. Third, finds the proposed work to be consistent with the design standards for development within the Reincliff Overlay District as set forth at Chapter 125, Section 125-69. D. Grants the above cited special use permits subject to the securing of site plan approvals and the timely satisfaction of all conditions and/or requirements related to the site plan approval. Three, in the matter of the application for certificate of demolition or removal, A. Finds, as did the New York State Office for Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, the intended demolition of the existing shed to have no adverse impact on this historic property. B. Grants without condition the requested certificate of demolition or removal and authorizes the ZEO and/or building inspector to timely issue the required demolition permit. Four, in the matter of the application for wetlands permit, A. Finds, as did the town's Conservation Advisory Board, the proposed work to have negligible if any impact on a wetland resource. B. Grants without condition the requested wetlands permit. Five, in the matter of the application for site plan review and approval, one, in consideration of the nature of the proposed work and the existing single-family use and occupancy of the property, waives the submission of any data not heretofore presented which would otherwise be required upon strict application of the submissions checklist set forth within one, Chapter 125, Section 125-75 Subsection C. Two, approves the application under Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125-69 and 125-73, and authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the site and architectural plan drawings and to transmit signed copies thereof to the applicant, the ZEO, and the building inspector upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following conditions and/or requirements within the next six calendar months. One, submission of site plan and architectural plan drawings for stamping and signature in the form and number specified under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-78 Subsection B, or as may be modified by the chair. Two, payment of any fees or reimbursable amounts due to town related to review and processing of both this application and the aforementioned applications for special use permits, certificate of demolition of removal, and wetlands permit. In taking this action, the planning board further authorizes the building inspector to issue a building permit for the proposed work upon receipt of a copy of the site and architectural plan drawings stamped and signed by the chair and the town zoning enforcement officer and/or building inspector as pertinent to subsequently issue a certificate of occupancy for the applicant's proposed modifications to the single-family dwelling premises, including the principal dwelling and the accessory structures and site improvements thereon, upon determination in each event that both the terms of this resolution and all their codes, laws, rules, or regulations within the purview of the zoning, including but not limited to the requirements of the New York State Uniform Building Code and Fire Prevention Code have been satisfied. So, that's it. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by Edna. We'll poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
I vote aye. Jesse?
Aye.
And please have the record note that Woody is, is still absent.
Just there was a seeker resolution and a close of public hearing?
I don't hear.
Oh, no, the seeker resolution on this was done previously.
Yes, thank you.
That's right, because this was the type one action. The ZBA couldn't act until...
That's what I went back and looked for because I, I'd only started here, you see?
No, no.
That messed me up like that. Holy cow, as I was halfway through reading it, I thought, did I close the public hearing?
In that case, we had to wait for Parks and Recreation.
Right. Yes, so now. That saved me at least two pages of reading.
I thought, I thought we'd found a way to cut down on the reading.
Well, in this case, because there was no seeker preceding it, I felt I had to read into the record, and because of the complications of the gardens, I wanted that all read into the record. David Chapman, good evening, Mr. Chapman, sixteen and thirty Valley Way wrote subdivision plat. This is the conduct of a public hearing on an application for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land in the matter of proposed lot line alteration between tax map parcels listed within the residential low density and Hudson River National Historic Landmarks Districts in the town's LWRI being an unlisted action under seeker and is subject of an application for area variances within the purview of the ZBA. Art?
Art?
Same thing?
No, this is a, this is the initial conduct of the public hearing. This is not a continuation.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chapman gets his, we have the, we have the litany of, of requirements for a public hearing that needs to be entered into the record.
Okay, so...
And Mr. Chapman gets to make a presentation.
Okay, so, let's see, we are in compliance with all escrows and fees, we are in compliance with certified mailings and photos and signs.
ZBA issued it to necess, the variances that were required by the ZEO, or the, ZBA issued variances to address noncompliant conditions that were determined by the ZEO that occurred on July twentieth.
And so, we are now at a point where we would ask you to make your presentation.
Sure, okay. If anybody wants to come and take a look at the map, I'll be happy to walk you through it. Basically, I own two properties on Valley Way Road, number sixteen and number thirty, next to each other. Number sixteen is my primary residence. I've been there twenty years. The house next door, I've had that for ten years. There is a strip of land that looks like it's part of my primary residence, but in, in fact, it actually belongs to the property next door. So, the only purpose for this proposal is to move the lot line between thirty and fifty feet towards a private right of way that separates the properties when you look at it from a landscaping point of view. So, I just want to move the line over and basically retain the piece of land that I've been maintaining that looks like part of my yard, but it's not. It actually belongs to the house next door on the other side of the road. So, I just want to move the, the line over. There's no changes at all to any of the existing buildings or anything. So, it's just a, a lot line move on Valley Way of thirty to forty feet to, to a piece of land that looks like it's part of my primary residence already. It will change, currently next door is two point nine acres, I am one point nine. It will even the acreage up to two point five and two point five on each side, so that will kind of even it up. But that's, that's, that's a change.
Okay, um, let's...
Any acreage requirement in...
In Reincliff?
Hmm? Is there any requirement for acreage in this area?
There was a variance required. Based, based on ZEO's determination, there was a variance required. I believe it was a three-acre situation.
Three acre.
But they received the variance.
Anyway, they received whatever, the variance that was, that was required. And this is not in the, by the way, this is not in the Hamlet District.
Okay.
This is actually in the, actually, it would have been a five-acre requirement because this is in the residential low density, the RL five district.
Okay.
So, I believe Edna and Jesse made a field visit. Would you like to report on your field visit?
I saw absolutely no issues. I think it's a, a good idea. I had just a suggestion, not a requirement, and that is that the lot line change include the gutter along the road because the trees along the road are right there. Here are the trees, here's the gutter, and here's the road, and if the property owner loses the ability to control that gutter at some future point, it could disturb the trees if some trenching was done to improve the gutter. It's just, just a suggestion.
The gutter being just a roadside ditch?
It's just a roadside ditch.
Okay.
Jesse, do you have anything to add?
Yes, no question.
Okay, well, let's ask Ryan for his Conservation Advisory Board report, and simultaneously, following that, the Waterfront Advisory Committee.
Both the board and the committee have no issue with what Mr. Chapman is planning to do.
Okay, thank you. Pursuant to Edna's comment, Ryan?
I was present for the site visit, and the trees are probably, they're not going to grow. They're, they're mature trees, so more than likely, if there was any changes to that driveway ditch, the trees might not even be there when those change, changes are made due to decay and things like that because it's a grouping of, I think, pine trees, and more than likely, they're at their fifty-year mark where soon probably the tops are going to start to die and probably, you know, there shouldn't be any issue. I mean, if there's a driveway ditch improvement or anything like that, they might want to think of new plantings of different trees, so.
Thank you. All right, Erith, do you wish to make any additional comments before I open it up to the public?
No, I think it's just a simple lot line move. Yeah, no other changes.
Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Okay, Art?
I have no, no adverse comments about the application. I think someone said it just seems to make sense to, to move that line to, to encompass that additional land in Mr. Chapman's, with Mr. Chapman's principal residence. There's a draft seeker resolution, a simple review of the short EAF and a negative declaration, and there's a draft approval resolution that because of an error on my part, actually occurs in two sections. occurs in two sections. The preamble is on page fifteen of the meeting notes, the rest of the resolution is on page two of the, at the top of page two of the addendum.
Aye. I've got the addendum right here. All right, so I'm going to start with, since I've read the introductory remarks, I'm going to start with, as subject of area variances granted by the ZBA on to be filled...
Hold on, hold on.
Draft seeker?
Seeker. Seeker.
Is that not pretty much...
Fourteen.
All right. Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts on a proposed action involving the May nineteen, two thousand sixteen, application by David Chapman for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land in the matter of a proposed lot line alteration between tax map parcels listed located at sixteen and thirty Valley Way Road within the residential low density RL5 and Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District and the Town's LWRA, and all as depicted or otherwise described in the application and supporting information, including a short EAF Part One and coastal assessment form completed by the applicant, various deeds, and a survey map entitled Proposed Amendment to filed map number 11144, lot line adjustments lots 2A and 2B prepared by J. Charles Berukas, PLS and dated March twenty-one, two thousand sixteen, is subject of area variances granted by the ZBA on...
July twentieth.
July twentieth?
Yes.
Two thousand sixteen, providing relief from certain zoning non-compliance as cited by the CEO. One, pursuant to its classification of the proposed action as an unlisted action under seeker and its determination to proceed independently with consideration of the proposed work without exercising the option for coordinated environmental quality review determines upon review of the short EAF Part One and its own completion of the annexed short EAF Part Two in consideration of both the criteria for determining significance set forth at Title VI, Part 617.7C NYCRR, and the pertinent coastal policies set forth within the Town's LWRP that the proposed action as described above will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment and thus issues a negative declaration under seeker with incorporated statement of consistency with coastal policies, deeming an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating such will not be prepared. This should be two, right?
Hmm?
Two?
Yes.
Two, authorizes the Chair to so execute the short EAF and directs the Planning Board Clerk to distribute and file the executed determination of significance in the manner set forth within the seeker implementing regulations Title VI, Part 617.12 NYCRR. May I hear a motion? Moved by Sharon, seconded by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. They have a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Moved by Jessie, seconded by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions, the motion carries.
The resolution basically has the same preamble with reference to the neg deck, and this is the, that follows.
Authorizes the Chair to stamp and sign the subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following conditions and/or requirements within the next one hundred and eighty calendar days. One, submission of the above-described subdivision plat being a surveyor's map by Mr. Decker in required form and number bearing all required stamps, seals, and certifications, and including executed notation thereon as either a non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department, as well as any further modifications in the drawing required by the CEO. Two, submission of a suitable draft of a merger or consolidation deed intended for recording the Dutchess County Clerk's Office simultaneously with filing of the approved subdivision plat. Three, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to town with respect to the submission, review, and processing of the application, including the above-sighted subdivision plat and merger or consolidation deed under Town Code Chapter 101, the Town's fee schedule and executed escrow agreement. Upon rereading of the draft approval resolution...
No, 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 you're, this is the end of it.
Okay, well, clear it, yeah. Well, it says four. Um, all right.
Just let it be the next slide.
The end.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Edna, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by everybody, including Jessie. Um, and I'll poll the board. Jessie?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
From here on in, mow your own lawn.
That's right.
Oh, let's see. Next up, Vanakiotis, Serukas, and Serukas Partners LLP, six-five-nine-five Route Nine North subdivision plat. This is the conduct of a public hearing on an application for subdivision approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land in the matter of the proposed consolidation of tax map parcels listed within the general business district. This matter previously being the subject of a conditional plat approval resolution adopted by the Planning Board on November sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, pursuant to which stated conditions and/or requirements were not satisfied within the maximum authorized time period and for which a timely request for extension was not submitted, being an unlisted action under seeker. So, let's see here. We, we are compliant in fees and escrow and in certified mailing, photo, and signage. So, we'll proceed with your presentation.
Brian Watts from MA Day Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant. He's just trying to reestablish that approval previously granted in consolidating three lots in the Town of Rhinebeck. They are point seven-three acres, oh, ten-point-two-four acres, and point four-four acres. The consolidation will result in, in a combined lot of eleven-point-nine-nine acres.
All right, does everybody understand why we're doing this tonight? Okay.
The point of information, the consolidation involves only those, I think it's the Eveready site in total, the Vanakiotis site involves five parcels, if I'm not mistaken, but only three of those are within the town outside village area. So, the action being taken here is to consolidate only the town outside village parcels. We weren't, we're not able to consolidate across the town-village line. The purpose of the consolid...
Is that, that's just...
That was a determination by the Village Planning Board.
We, we had originally approached it that way.
We had originally intended to consolidate everything.
And the village's opinion was that they cannot allow a merger with a village lot and a town lot, so that's why we're proceeding...
Would not allow, as opposed to can. And obviously, the purpose of the consolidation is to eliminate cross-lot development setback issues, et cetera, that would be otherwise associated with the redevelopment of the site were the consolidation not to...
Right, and that it's required for the subject...
And the other point of information here is that, um, the matter of site plan approval, social permits or whatever that are required for actually the reconstruction of the restaurant remains somewhat in limbo, or at least pending, based upon the need to satisfy, need for the applicant to satisfy Health Department requirements, because I think if you recall, the Health Department determined that they would be treating this project as new construction, and the applicant has been moving forward in that regard, but hasn't fully satisfied the Health Department yet.
Correct.
And because of all that, we did waive the need for a, for a field visit in this application. So, I see Ryan standing at the ready.
He shouldn't have any more comments, yeah.
No comments?
Do you have a report? I submitted before, it was not a read or read, realizing this is just...
You stand, you stand by your prior comments?
Okay. Um, is there anyone here from the public wishing to comment on this application? Any comments from members of the Planning Board?
It's nice to get it finished.
Yeah, let's get this done so I can get my diner back.
Okay. Um, I think we're ready to move ahead with the resolutions.
There's a draft seeker resolution, which is a reaffirmation of the prior negative declaration. That's the first paragraph on page seventeen. Frankly, I don't think it needs to be read, it's simply a reaffirmation of the prior neg deck.
May I have a motion to approve the draft seeker resolution, which is a reaffirmation of the previous?
So moved.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Edna. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thanks for sharing.
They have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, thank you. Um, the approval resolution?
Approval resolution was addressed in my addendum, there's a mistake in the approval resolution. Uh, if you look at bottom, bottom of page seventeen, the very last paragraph, paragraph B should be stricken, that was not part of this resolution, it's part of another resolution. It was meant to be part of the Chapman resolution, supposing a condition, presupposing a condition that we thought was going to be imposed by the ZBA, and the ZBA didn't impose the condition. So, that simply needs to be stricken.
Which one? I've got two Bs. And one word is the goal.
The other thing is, on this...
Oh, it's really short now.
Need to talk to my word program, but the first A, the first A and B are really meant to be one and two, numbered paragraphs one and two. So, the first A is numbered paragraph one, the second, the B, first B is numbered paragraph two. It then follows with A, and C becomes B with the deletion.
Glad you cleared that up.
I'm going to start, I'm going to start with one.
Talk to technology.
I'm going to start with one. Deems the proposed lot line alteration to be consistent with pertinent coastal policies set forth within the Town's LWRP. Two, authorizes the Chair to stamp and sign a subdivision plat depicting exclusively the consolidation of the three parcels within the town outside village area upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following conditions and/or requirements within the next one hundred and eighty calendar days. A, submission of the above-described subdivision plat being a surveyor's map in required form and number bearing both all required stamps, seals, and certifications, and including executed notation thereon as either a non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department, as well as any modifications in the drawing required by the CEO. And then, um...
Payment of any outstanding fees...
C becomes B, which is payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Rhinebeck with respect to the subdivision review and processing of this application, including the above-sighted subdivision plat and merger or consolidation deed under the Town Code Chapter 101, the Town's fee schedule and executed escrow agreement. I, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by Eric. I'll poll the board. Jessie?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, next up, Susan Coff.
Yeah, you're doing fine.
Oh, good. Susan Coff, River and Rhine Road subdivision plat, conduct of public hearing on an application for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land in the matter of a proposed consolidation of lots 3A and 4 as previously depicted on a subdivision plat entitled re-subdivision of filed map 5873A as approved by resolution of the Planning Board on February third, two thousand and sixteen, on the survey map entitled merger of lots 3A and 4 filed map 5873B, and located within the historic preservation and Hudson River National Historic Landmarks under the Town's LWRA being an unlisted action under seeker. I note we are current in all escrow and fees and in compliance with certified mailing, photo, and signage.
Back into compliance.
Um, all right, Susan, would you like to make your application, presentation?
Sure, it's very short. I own two lots on, on the River Road and Rhine Road, and I want to merge them. This is lot four, and that's six-point-five-five acres, and then I own a lot 3A, which is fourteen-point-nine-five-nine acres. I want to merge them, and by merging them, I am removing this lot line over here, and I will then have merged a lot that is now twenty-one-point-one-five acres, which will conform to the current zoning, which is twenty-acre zoning on River Road. That's it.
Okay. Um, Edna and Jessie, you went on this field visit too?
Yep, we didn't say anything.
Who would like to report?
We didn't say anything, it was pretty simple, straightforward.
You didn't what?
We didn't say anything to be concerned about, it was pretty simple and straightforward.
Yeah, it's, it's a great idea, it brings the two lots into compliance, they become one twenty-acre plus lot.
Okay. All right, Ryan?
Good evening again, board. Even though the CAB was not present for the Planning Board members due to some confusion of some not knowing where Ms. Coff lives, but that was corrected...
We heard earlier, she's got multiple properties.
I, I know, but we finally made it there, and Mrs. Coff, Ms. Coff was very nice and just explained to us everything that's going on, and we have no issue with what she's planning, planning to do, so.
And that stands as both CAB and Waterfront Advisory.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, we're in here from the public wishing to comment on this application. Any other questions from members of the Planning Board?
Importantly, in this case, there is a letter from the Dutchess County Land Conservancy. Land Conservancy has a conservation easement on this property, and they have authorized this particular merger. Not surprisingly, they've authorized this particular, this particular merger. Consequently, there really are no, no issues associated with this, there's no additional development proposed, in fact, there's one less house proposed. And as Susan pointed out, while this subdivision was created just before the passage of the two thousand and nine zoning, and was in compliance with zoning as it existed at, at that time, it is now in compliance with the, will now be in compliance with the updated zoning. So, consequently, there is a, a seeker resolution, somewhat seeker resolution with incorporated coastal policy finding, and a draft resolution for your approval, and they sound very much like some others this evening, all of which have been pretty simple.
You want me to read the full introductory paragraph?
I frankly, uh, you read the introductory paragraph on the seeker resolution, and that, that then just leads to the issuance of a neg deck and a statement of...
Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on a proposed action involving an application of the Planning Board by Susan Coff for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land in the matter of lots 3A and 4, as individually shown on a subdivision plat entitled re-subdivision of filed map 5873A is prepared by Charles Berukas, PLS, and approved by resolution of the Planning Board on February third, two thousand and nine, and now depicted for consolidation on a proposed subdivision plat entitled Lot Merger, lots 3A and 4 filed map 5837B, prepared by John Decker, dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, revised to August third, two thousand and sixteen, located within the HP twenty and Historic Landmarks District in the Town's LWRA, and being the subject of an authorization letter from the Dutchess Land Conservancy dated July fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and among other supporting documents, a short EAF Part One and Ag data statement, and a coastal consistency form.
And after some additional necessary language, there's a directive to the Chair to execute the AAF and to distribute and file the negative declaration.
Right, and you had a note here about the, oh, that's in the approvals. Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I'll vote aye. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Then we have a draft approval resolution, the first paragraph of which is repeated from the seeker determination, authorizes the Chair to stamp and sign a subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following conditions and/or requirements within the next one hundred and eighty calendar days. One, submission of the above-described subdivision plat being a surveyor's map in required form and number bearing both all required stamps, seals, and certifications, and including executed notation thereon as either a non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department, as well as any further modifications in the drawing required by the CEO. Two, submission of a suitable draft of a merger or consolidation deed intended for recording the Dutchess County Clerk's Office simultaneously with recording of the approved subdivision plat.
And that record, word recording is changed to filing.
Intended for filing in the Dutchess County...
You record a deed and you file a plat.
For filing in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office simultaneously with...
The filing of the...
Filing of the approved subdivision plat. We'll get it right. Three, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Rhinebeck with respect to the subdivision review and processing of this application, including the above-sighted subdivision plat and merger and/or consolidation deed under Town Code Chapter 101, the Town's fee schedule and executed escrow agreement. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sharon.
Second.
Seconded by Jessie. I'll poll the board. Jessie?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Motion carries. You're done.
You're done. You have to have an archaeological dig along the line. Where it's, where that line is erased, we can't destroy anything along it, so we just...
We closed the public hearing, and you had both your seeker resolution and your approvals resolution. You're very welcome. You may request anything you want of the town board, because I consider those to be their cushions and seats, so. Up next.
KPH two, Mr. Gominski.
We are now up to...
Seven oh five.
KPH two, Management LLC, Astor Courts, one eighty-nine River Road, special use permit.
And site plan.
And site plan. This is the conduct of a public hearing on an application for special use permit and site plan under Town Code Chapter one twenty-five zoning, Sections one twenty-five dash forty and one twenty-five dash fifty-four, in the matter of the removal of debris and repair or replacement of stream culverts within the tax map parcel listed within the historic preservation and Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, the Estates District Scenic Area of Statewide Significance, and the town's LWRA being unlisted action under seeker. We are, uh, we are in compliance in escrow and fees, we are in compliance with certified mailing, signs, photos. We have forwarded a referral to Dutchess County on August fourth, and we have heard that it's back as a matter of local concern. We don't have a date in that column, but I'm trusting you here. Um, it came in this morning. Okay, great. Mark, would you like to present?
Good evening, I'm Mark Gominski, I'm here representing KPH two LLC. It's also a property more familiarly known as Astor Courts. It's located on the west side of River Road, and it borders the Hudson River. There's access off of River Road, there's a single driveway that goes back to the, you know, main structure of the property, it was, you know, formerly part of the Astor Estate. And what this particular application is for is, is actually for repair of some culverts that are, that were placed underneath the railroad. There was a section of the railroad, actually same railroad that just went through the previous application, heard by this board. It's adjoined on the, on the east, east, southeast by Coff, and so it's a railroad that went through Coff's property, continues through this particular property, and so the, this specific application is, there are two stone, three by four box culverts that are located near the easterly boundary of the property, and that they have, they're, they're in need of repair. There's been, uh, there's debris located on the south end of the, of the drainage area that contributes to that, and it, flow is currently from the south to the north, and it traverses through the property, and then ultimately discharges down to the south and ultimately to the Hudson River. So it's, it's one, it's, there's, there's multiple things that we want to accomplish with this, with this particular application, is to clean up the debris that's located on the south end of those culverts, and then also too, those, those culverts are, there appears to be, um, you know, they're, they're disrupted somewhere between the inlet and the outlet. There's, there's a, some disturbance located in the middle of the road bed, it looks like they collapsed.
I don't think it was that.
And so, and it was, it became very evident during Hurricane Irene, is water backed up into the south of this, and actually backed up significantly twelve to fourteen feet, and then actually breached the railroad bed and discharged, and then flowed over, and then ultimately into the stream. So this application goes to examine, we're trying to examine and determine what the issue is and repair it. And due to the location of these culverts, as, you know, mentioned in, in the notice, it's, it required application for a site plan and special permit to this board. Associated with that application, we did some, you know, environmental analysis, wetlands were delineated on the property, and there was a habitat assessment that was, that was prepared as part of this application. And then finally, because of the historic nature of this, there was, at part of the pre-application discussions and discussions, ongoing discussions on this property with the board, is that we've agreed to retain an archaeologist to, to be able to be with us when, you know, on site, when excavation and, and, you know, determination of the nature of the, you know, the damage or repair necessary for the culverts takes place. So there'll be an archaeology, archaeologist on, on site in order to ensure that there's, you know, no significant, you know, historic features that we're, that we're going to remove or disturb. This, you know, particular process, it's a, you know, for, for repair, trying to keep everything, all the work on the railroad bed, as I said, the culverts are pretty, they're, you know, there's about thirteen to fourteen feet of cover over the, over the top of the culvert. So it's going to be a, a process to remove some of that soil, you know, place it to the, to the east towards Coff's property, in such a manner that we're able to reestablish the, you know, the original railroad bed as, as it was, or as it is now, and create an excavation that's large enough that, so that we can safely go and inspect and determine the nature of the, the nature of the repairs. And then, you know, also associated with the excavation is, I've prepared plans that were submitted to the town to, you know, consider all the erosion and sediment control, you know, requirements that the state has, and so there'll be dewatering set up on the south end and pumped around, pumped over the railroad bed and to the north, so that we can safely dewater the area and, and go in and explore and see what has to be done. The ultimate goal is to hopefully just repair, hopefully, you know, to maintain the historic, you know, presence of those culverts and, and go and repair, but we're not able to determine that until we do some excavation and, and see what is, see what the conditions of the culverts are.
Mark, as a point of clarification, on these drawings, is photo four, five, and six of the photos of that, of that culvert?
Yes. Oh, it's, it's...
Because they look quite a bit significantly larger than what we saw on site. Now, maybe it's the backside of it, or?
That's, this is, this side here is what you saw from the road where we walked in. That's, those are, that's, that's that section right there, that's, that's what we're, you know, when we, we're at parts.
Yeah.
And we...
Oh, okay, that's...
That's looking from the driveway.
From that way up. Okay, so the, on the other side, it's much, much reduced.
On the other side, you see right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, covered with, covered with...
Right, so there's almost nothing on this side, so that's basically been silted in in that area.
It's been silted in, and it's also, you can see all the...
And a lot of debris, right. Now, is the plan to, to remove all that silt and debris, or is that...
Certainly, where the, where the, right next to the...
Same question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right next to the inlet, so it would be inlet of the culvert. It is, it is the intention to clean that out.
So you'll make a, a large catch basin in that area, and then it'll continue to float?
Yeah, a bit of a sump, right?
Okay.
And then there's also, obviously with the, with the dewatering operation too, it requires...
Right, you'll have to do something for that.
Dewatering there, divert any flow that comes from, you know, that, that comes from this direction.
About what size would that area be?
Excuse me?
About what size would that area be that's dug out and...
You mean for the sub or for the...
Well, for both, combined.
For both. I mean, it's probably, um, a, you know, maybe a ten by, ten by twenty area, something like that. I mean, remember those culvert, those box culverts?
Well, what's going to keep it from just washing back in again, it's only that big?
That's, you know, that's...
Part of the investigation.
Part of the investigation.
All right, because, I mean, it looks like this part is at least three feet buried in silt.
It is buried in silt, right, so that, that area's going to be excavated out.
Okay, so that, that will no longer be buried in silt.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So you're going to bring it down to its, its original level?
Absolutely, yeah, we want to bring it down to the, to the, you know, to the existing inverts, bottom, bottom of those culverts.
Okay.
Once again, the, part of this, you know, part of this process is to ensure that it's no change in downstream drainage conditions, right? So we're keeping it exactly, exactly as it was designed.
What happens if you find out they cannot be repaired?
Well, that's part of our, you know, we've compensated for that in the resolution, that if there's a determination made that they cannot be repaired, Mark is going to have to engineer a replacement, that, those engineering specifications will have to come back to us, and we're likely to refer those to our planning engineer, Ray Jokowski.
Okay.
So that's sort of the...
What would be the difference between repair and replace in kind?
If we have to take a section out, it would be, it would be more than likely a box culvert that, that goes in replacement, so it would be pre-cast concrete.
Pre-cast concrete, and then...
Pre-cast concrete, have to, you know, I don't know, either side by side now, I don't know what separation is, you know, underneath the railroad bed, I think they're slightly separated, I don't know if both, you know, we have to cast, you know, separate culverts, twin culverts, maybe it's a single culvert that is, that is cast, they have to, they have to work with pre-cast concrete, you know, to determine that, you know, the cross section is still the same.
Would then there be facings on either side in stone to look like the original, or?
No, it would be, and so if, if it comes to that, more than likely, what's buried underneath the railroad bed would be pre-cast concrete. What would be exposed at both ends, you would still see the stone, the stone culvert, you know, the stone...
So either, either way, we'd be looking at the same finished product.
Exactly, that's, that's the goal.
Okay.
It's not only the goal, that's what, that's what would be, that, that, that's what would be.
That's the goal, and they have enough money to make it come true.
Okay, um, anything else, Mark?
Uh, no.
Okay, let's see, Woody and Eric, I think you were both on the site visit.
Mm-hmm.
Report, please.
Report's very simple, I think it's a great idea, I see no problems with it whatsoever.
I concur.
Hey, Orion, see you out there.
Hello again, board.
Trying to get out that door.
No, I was, I was trying.
I saw you in the hallway.
I was thinking, you know, just make a run for it. Hello again, board, Ryan Dowden, CAB, also Waterfront Advisory Committee. I'm going to give two reports, one for the Conservation Advisory Board. We know the intended work is going to create stream disturbance, however, we feel that the disturbance will not be of a serious nature or adversely alter the stream. We just ask that measures be taken. We are positive with the measures that the engineer explained at the visit, the use of a sump pump, that the wetlands are marked, and that even though there will be a removal of the trees, the, the amount is going to be small, so we're satisfied with that and okay with that, due to the fact that the culvert is in need of repair and quote unquote failing, so I think one weighs out the other. For the Waterfront Advisory Committee with, as pertains to the consistency review, we sort of have the same language, that we don't feel there will be a serious impact, or that the intended work grossly conflicts with the policies in the LWRP. Excuse me. But we just like to stress that best practices to prevent erosion sedimentation runoff, either use of burlap or whatever means that the engineer and job site can do is appreciated, so, other than that, that's it.
Thank you.
Melody, if I, if I might say, there is a, another culvert or underpass of that same roadway that's gone on before, and they've done an excellent job at protecting the stream and putting a scaffolding across there, and so they can continue the work and completely protect the stream, so I...
So it can be done?
It can be done, and they've done a good job so far.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Mark?
No comment at all, the, there is a seeker resolution, I think, kind of consistent with what the CAB and the Waterfront Advisory Committee reported, there really aren't any, there could be environmental issues associated with the work if it were not proposed to be carried out in the manner in which it is going to be carried out, as shown on the plans and described by Mr. Gominski. Consequently, there's a seeker resolution granting a, granting a negative declaration for the, that's available for the board's consideration. And should the board act on the seeker resolution, there then is an approvals resolution, which again is a two-part resolution. It's in part provided for in my meeting notes from last Tuesday, and upon reading my notes, both Ron and Melody pointed out that I really hadn't dealt with the what-if of reconstruction. And the what-if of reconstruction is now dealt with in the language that's included in the addendum, and that what-if of, says that if there does turn out to be the need for reconstruction as opposed to simple repair, the existing, present drawings will undoubtedly be supplemented, and there will be requirement for engineering review by the planning board engineer.
All right, I'll proceed with the draft seeker resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts on a proposed action involving applications by KPH two Management LLC for special use permits under Town Code Chapter one twenty-five zoning Sections one twenty-five forty, one twenty-five fifty-four, and site plan review and approval under Section one twenty-five dash seventy-three B two. In the matter of the removal of debris and the repair and or replacement of stream culverts within tax map parcel listed, the Astor Courts property within the HP twenty and Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, the Estates District Scenic Area of Statewide Significance, the town's LWRA, all depicted on Sheet one of two site plan, and Sheet two of two construction details, culvert repair, stream diversion, prepared by Mark Gominski and dated June thirty, two thousand and sixteen. Further subject of other supporting information, including a full EAF, Part One, an agricultural data statement, a resource analysis assessment, a coastal assessment, and form a threatened and endangered species habitat suitability report, and commitment to maintain onsite monitoring by an archaeologist of site excavation as it occurs. One, pursuant to its classification of the proposed action as an unlisted action under seeker, and its determination to proceed independently with consideration of the proposed work without exercising the option for coordinated environmental review, quality review, determines upon review of the full EAF Part One and its own completion of the annexed full EAF Part Two, in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth at Title Six, Part six one seven point seven C NYCRR, and the pertinent coastal policies set forth within the town's LWRP that the proposed action, as described, will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment, and thus issues a negative declaration with incorporated statement of consistency with coastal policies, deeming an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chair to so execute the full AF and directs the planning board clerk to distribute and file the executed determination of significance in the manner set forth within seeker implementing regulations Title Six, Part six one seven point one two NYCRR. May I hear a motion?
Don't move.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by Jesse, was it Jesse? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, no, motion passed. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So be it.
Moved by Woody, seconded by Jesse, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and we'll move ahead to the draft approvals resolution.
In the draft approvals resolution, I'm again going to speak badly of word processing program. Under one, the paragraphs should be, should read A, B, C, D, not A, C, D, E, or whatever they do. Secondly, under numbered paragraph two, instead of A and B as written in the notes, what gets substituted is A, B, C, as provided for in the addendum.
Okay, this is a real test tonight. All right, um... Alright, um-
Which is another reason why we've gone from a two-week to a three-week lead time.
Uh, so, the, and further being the subject of a neg deck with incorporated statement of consistency with coastal policies heretofore issued by the planning board, One, in the matter of the application for special use permit, A, first finds the proposed work to be consistent with the general standards for special permit uses set forth at Chapter 125, Section 125 dash 67, B, second, further finds the proposed work, excuse me, though located within 1,000 feet of the Hudson River, and involving designated stream corridors to be remedial in nature and to have limited additional effect beyond the existing condition on either the visual quality of the environmental and ecological resources of this waters resource, and thus authorizes issuance of the requested special use permit under Townco Chapter 125, Section 125 dash 40, Development Near Streams, Rivers, Wetlands, and Other Water Bodies, and Section 125 dash 54, Water Resources Protection Overlay District. C, third finds, further finds the proposed work to be consistent with applicable preservation objections, both in terms of culvert-
Objectives.
Objects, oh, objectives?
Yeah.
With applicable preservation objectives, both in terms of culvert headwall design, and commitment as cited in the negative declaration under seeker issued by the planning board to maintain onsite monitoring of site excavation by an archaeologist. Uh, D, grants the above cited special use permit subject to the securing of site plan approval and the timely satisfaction of all conditions and/or requirements related to site plan. Two, in the matter of the application for site plan review and approval, approves the application for site plan review and approval and authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the site plan on the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within the next six calendar months. A, should initial site excavation and engineering evaluation lead to a determination existing drainage structure, structures require replacement slash reconstruction instead of repair, review of the heretofore engineering plan supplemented as may be necessary by more detailed plans or associated studies by the planning board engineer and securing of a sign-off letter from the planning board engineer. B, submission of site plan drawings in the number informed specified within Townco Chapter 125, Section 125 dash 78, subsection B, or as may be modified by the chair, with such drawings bearing all information required by the Z E O and/or planning board engineer as discussed above, and all required stamps, seals, signatures, and certifications. C, payment of any fees or reimbursable amounts due to town related to review and processing of both this application and the aforementioned application for special use permits. May I hear a motion?
Can you go back?
Gotta go back.
In taking this action-
In taking this action, the planning board authorizes the zoning enforcement officer and/or building inspector to issue permits as required for the conduct of the work following receipt of a site plan stamped and signed by the chair, and recommends the issuing official ensure that both the best management practices are employed and committed monitoring by an archaeologist occur when applicable during conduct of the work. Now may I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by? Seconded by Jesse, I'll pull the board, Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, thanks, Mark. Um, and, just a couple more items, so let's plunge on ahead here. Uh, we are up to, uh, John LeBotsky, 344 White Schoolhouse Road, Special Use Permit. As the conduct of a public hearing on an application for renewal, special use permit, soil mining under Townco Chapter 125 zoning, and in accordance with New York State D E C Mine Land Reclamation Permit Number Three, and a long number listed, to authorize continuation of mining operations within a 12.3 acre life of mine area within a 54.3 acre tax map parcel listed, within both the rural countryside, R C five, and mining overlay districts, and agricultural district twenty, and related request for a waiver under Townco Chapter 120 Wetlands pursuant to section 120 dash eight A, therein being an unlisted action under seeker. Um, we are, um, we are current on escrow and fees, we are in compliance, and a letter was sent to Dutchess County on August 10th, and I think we'll talk about that a bit.
First question, Mark, concerns the status of the renewal application for the D E C permit.
So, in, in that regard, so the, um, application, it's August, uh, application was made to the D E C in, I believe it was, was around July 15th, around mid-July, that was, uh, that was part of the requirement, uh, permitting requirement with D E C, so, uh, plan was prepared, a, a narrative, uh, describing the mining operations that have occurred during the current permit term, and what's anticipated for the, uh, pre, uh, the, the, uh, proposed permit term from 2016 to 2021, and, uh, various applic-, and application form was also submitted to D E C, it was reviewed, um, it, they had, uh, D E C had, uh, a few minor comments, those comments, uh, amended the, uh, the permit and, uh, and some other documents as, as requested by D E C, resubmitted, and, uh, those were found, um, to be acceptable, and the, um, uh, there was one item that, uh, D E C requested, it was, uh, in strict conformance with the, uh, reclamation plan, uh, that was, uh, submitted as part of this application, uh, which was back in 2006, and, um, so that, uh, made, uh, changes as requested by D E C, it was with regard to, uh, excavation, and, uh, you know, relative to location of one of, one of the mine faces, uh, in the northern end of the mine, uh, that was, uh, amended, and, um, located, and it is, it'll be, uh, we just did it today, and will be resubmitted to D E C, and as far as I know, that's, uh, that'll, that's all that's outstanding. At D E C, uh, D E C did make a, uh, a site inspection of this particular mine. For, uh, would you, uh, for the, I, I guess I'll, I'll go through and make it, uh, I'll make a presentation and describe, uh, the application. So this is a, this has been an ongoing application for, uh, John, uh, LeBotsky, uh, property's located on the west side of, of White Schoolhouse Road, and it's, uh, it has been, um, mined for, I'm not quite sure, I know, I've been involved since, uh, since 2000, since 2006, there was previous application that was made on this mine, uh, Dave Queen did it for John LeBotsky, and it was just mining, uh, this area, uh, as, as you enter in, uh, to the west off of White Schoolhouse Road, there was, it was just a, it was just mining in this area, and then, uh, in 2006, uh, made application to the D E C, and it was also, uh, application to, uh, to this board, because special permit has always been required, uh, for, uh, for mining in this, in this area, that the, uh, the, the mine was to be expanded from, uh, just mining in the, the southern portion of the property, and then it was extended, uh, to the north, which, uh, is, you know, ultimately now, it was described in there, the total life of the mine is now, uh, 12 point, 12 point two, 12.3 acres, so it went from here to expanding into this area here, so that has been, uh, that's, as I said, that's been existence since 2006, so this is the second, uh, request for a, uh, permit renewal, so with D E C and with the, uh, Town of Rhinebeck, well, Town of Rhinebeck has followed suit with its special permit requirement, D E C requires five-year permit renewals on, on their soil mines, and so then, uh, Town of Rhinebeck, uh, special permit is also, uh, requires reapplication at that time, so this is the second time that, uh, I've been in representing Mr. LeBotsky on, uh, for this particular soil mine, and, um, it's, uh, you know, it's basically has, uh, and so it's currently, um, mined by Rich Von Der Leef, who owns, uh, a gravel, uh, mine to the south, and this mine was permitted for strictly, uh, well, obviously for the removal of sand and gravel, but it's also been permitted to have for excavation, uh, below the water table, so for creation of a pond, uh, one of the requirements for this mine is that, uh, material, no, no material is processed on this mine site, uh, although, uh, Von Der Leef does mine it, anything that's to be processed or screened is loaded in a truck, truck that, truck to the south to his, um, soil mine and is processed there, uh, material can certainly be excavated, loaded, and hauled directly to a site, and, um, it has been, um, uh, you know, proceeding as, as approved and as, uh, as designed in the 2006 plan, essentially it's to, um, you know, uh, you know, pond is obviously part of the reclamation, but, you know, along the westerly portion, uh, Rich has, um, you know, put that into pasture and reclaimed it, and is currently mining, uh, generally mining in the northerly area, and so the idea is to, uh, continue that mine, and once again, the ultimate reclaim, reclamation is a pond, create a pond, and then ultimately work his way out of the mine, and that's, and that's the direction in which he's going now. Uh, it's hard, you know, anticipate, you know, it's, it's maybe through this permit term, there may be another permit term, uh, that will be, you know, filed for this application, it's certainly, you know, based on, based on economics. Uh, the site is, um, essentially, uh, surrounded by wetlands, wetlands on the, uh, to the north of the property, it's D E C, R C 30, uh, and, uh, to the north, and to the, uh, the south and to the west is R C 36, so that has, that has defined, uh, the limits of the mine, and then as you go on the eastern portion of the mine, there's some, there's a, there's, it's, it's, it's all wooded, uh, evergreens right near the intersection of White Schoolhouse Road and Hilltop are located here, and then also that's, it's wooded in here, so as you enter into the mine, it's fairly well screened, uh, it's screened from the, um, from the road, from White Schoolhouse Road.
Um, Sharon and Eric made a site visit, could we hear your report?
We were there Friday, um, Richie does a good job, I mean, the reclamation on the west side-
Southwest, west side.
Has, you know, it's been done, I mean, the birds were, birds were there, even though it was kinda hot, um, this barn's, uh, bank swallows use the, the sand banks to nest in the spring, so it's a, it's a nice nature area, that's, uh, nice and clean, and have no problem with the renewal.
Eric?
I have nothing to add, it looked like a, I mean, perfectly reasonable, uh, project, and, uh, they did a good job on what's already been done, I don't expect anything different on the rest of it.
Well, Ryan, entering from stage left.
Hello again, um, I'm going to submit the report done by the C A B member who was present for the visit, um, sort of concurring with what the planning board members have already said, um, pretty much that because of what Mr. Von Der Leef, uh, reclaims and takes out is such a small scale, that the impact of, uh, wildlife, habitat, whatever may be, um, is small in nature, and that also because, uh, whatever is reclaimed is taken to his own, uh, processing site, um, you know, and that is not processed there onsite is, uh, key factors. Other than that, um, and also that it's limited in depth where he will mine, that, um, really any, uh, danger to groundwater is, uh, small, so. And, that's it.
Is there anyone here from the public who would like to offer comment?
I'm Paul Doherty, um, semi-retired from package payment and Red Wing, uh, we're property owners just to the north of this property, and I'm here to speak in favor of the application, I'd like to pass out something that came to my attention in the New York Times about two months ago.
Turn to page three. Thanks, Paul.
We'll, we'll, we'll look on.
Page three, the, uh, first paragraph and the second paragraph.
Well, because this is a public hearing, can we ask you to read those paragraphs?
Yes, if, uh-
Well, I, I think we would be remiss if we did not do that.
Uh, it talks about the, uh, the title of it is "The World's Disappearing Sand", and there's a black market in sand in other parts of the world, and this area, the Hudson Valley, uh, will shortly run out of sand, partly because of the, um, mines running out and the neighborhood, uh, influence on, uh, the zoning regarding mining, so in California, uh, they talked about not to mention the extra truck traffic and pollution, California state officials estimated that if the average hauling distance for sand and gravel increased by 25 miles, trucks would burn through nearly 50 million more gallons of diesel fuel every year, think of the pollution and the traffic on the roads. Now, we can make more sand, but crushing rock or pulverizing concrete is costly, and the resulting sand is ill-suited for many applications, we can use alternative substances for some purposes, but what other substance can be, can we possibly find 40 billion tons every year? Just to give you an example, uh, when Jeff Decker was mining the LeBotsky, well, the Kamelund property, uh, Red Wing had the contract to supply the Hyde Park landfill and wiped him out of sand for the drainage layer. The, uh, plant that we had in Town of Beakman supplied 110,000 ton for the drainage layer for the Danbury landfill, now you need this product for your asphalt, your concrete, for, for making glass, your glasses are made out of sand, uh, people don't understand the need for this product, and my reason for explaining this is I would like to see the planning board recommend to the town board to extend the mining overlay zone to include the property to the south of Von Der Leef's present processing area, he bought that property with the intention to mine it, not realizing that the mining overlay zone ended before that piece of property, it's a small piece, I don't think Richie has more than another year or two here if the market picks up a little, and for the people, the town highway department, and for the people of Rhinebeck, you should have local sources of sand and gravel, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else from the public wishing to comment? Art?
A couple of brief comments, um, on this application, uh, number one, uh, I think everyone agrees, uh, from observation, I was not out there, uh, in this past month, but I've been out there two or three times within the last couple of years, uh, certainly it's been a well-run operation. Secondly, uh, there is no proposal at this point in time, uh, to increase the scale or the intensity of the operation, uh, nor is there any proposal, uh, by the applicant of, within, uh, the, the request for renewal of special permit by the planning board, or renewal of, of, of mine land permit by D E C, to in any way modify the conditions that were imposed by the planning board, I believe, back in 2006, and incorporated since then in the, uh, D E C, uh, permits, uh, bottom line is, uh, it's a good operation, it's a beneficial operation, uh, it's consistent with town zoning, it's been found by the state to be consistent with the mine land reclamation- has not changed in any way since 2006 or 2011, and the regulatory environment has not changed in any way since 2011. That all leads to a situation in which I believe it's, it's fair to recommend to the Planning Board that a negative declaration under Saker be issued. Technically, it could be, in fact, a statement of consistency with a prior declaration, but for, for, for planning purposes, we could consider it a, basically a negative declaration on the, on the renewal application. And secondly, that the application be approved, subject to all the same conditions that were imposed in the, in the past and embraced by DEC. One little glitch, which in terms of not taking that position, but taking that position this evening. We find that occasionally attorneys have differences of opinion. Well, in this case, we've got a situation with planners with differences of opinion. Going back to the last meeting, I did not provide for the referral of this particular matter to Dutchess County Planning under Section 239 of the General Municipal Law, because I interpreted that provision to relate to the issuance of special use permits and not the renewal of an existing special use permit. Been advised just today that I have been, well, not I have, say have been, overall, there's a difference of opinion that's been expressed by the Commissioner of Planning. He wants to see a referral and an opportunity to respond to this particular matter. Consequently, I think the conservative position is to defer action until the, until the next meeting. The bottom line is, I assume, I'm going to assume that the recommendation to the county is going to be a matter of local concern, strictly a matter of local concern, and will be recommending at your next meeting that you act affirmatively on the two resolutions that I thought you'd be acting on this evening.
So we'd need a motion to continue the public hearing?
And consequently, you need a motion to continue the public hearing to this meeting.
Can we apologize, this only came up. Okay. May I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much. We have, I believe, only one other, yes?
I believe it's the gentleman in the third row or?
Yeah.
I know this is already done, but would it, I mean, would it, could we have moved to just ignore that and go ahead?
No, because technically, the referral was not made, the referral was just made in recent days, you know, based upon their last few days, based upon that. And even if the referral had been made on the 18th of July, absent a response from the county, 30 days would not have expired.
Okay. So for two weeks.
But the only thing left.
On other situations on the agenda, we did have early response.
So do we have enough time so that this can happen for the next meeting?
Based upon the referral happened, what, eight, on the 10th, right, or something like that? There's enough time.
Okay, good.
Which is, which is another problem. That is a problem when meetings are four weeks apart.
Yeah.
It's 28 days and not 30.
Right.
And you do have to rely upon county planning, or the CAB, or the WAC to favorably respond to your request for an early response.
Yeah, we do in those situations request early response, and the applicant also can make their own request for early response. Last up, this is Tops supermarket sign permit for former, well, almost former Stop and Shop. Presentation and planning board review and consideration of town design guidelines and of timely recommendation to the CEO. So this doesn't go to the Zoning Board of Appeals directly to the CEO for a sign permit?
Yeah, sign permit to CEO. And the CEO may not issue a sign permit under the zoning law unless it's been authorized by the Planning Board.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pat Bondi with Saxton Signs. I do have a few handouts there.
That would be terrific. You can hand that right to.
Secretary.
That way it doesn't get lost in transmitting.
I haven't seen anything on this. No.
Do we have?
There was nothing in my box.
I only saw this on Ron's desk. You all received copies of this? So.
No, nothing at all.
We three were. Normally, just because we're working through this electronic, you know, we still want to see copies in our files.
And I think we've, I think we've demonstrated this evening, electronic transmissions don't always go through at minutes.
Okay. Well, now that we've got something to refresh our memory, please proceed.
Okay. On the first page, you'll see some illuminated channel letters. We're removing 163 square feet of letters that are halo lit from behind, and we'd like to install 158 square foot signs that are facelit. That's on the first page. And on the second page, there's a bunch of product signs that if you add them all up, were actually one square foot less than the existing signs if you add all the five signs up. So they're same, they're individual molded plastic letters. And then if you look on the third page, we're going to replace that with the same size that's there, which is 23 square feet, a non-illuminated aluminum pen, or aluminum flat sign. And at the end of the day, we're taking down 263.5 square feet, and we're going to install 244.5 square feet. I don't know if you have any questions on any of them signs?
No, I don't have any question on the signs, but we did go back and we looked at the resolution for the Stop and Shop area variance, because there were some concerns raised about the type of lighting of the signs. And so what I have here is the actual resolution, which says building facade signage, none of the signs will be internally illuminated. The main Stop and Shop sign will be visible at night by illuminating the area of the facade behind the letters. The department signs will have no direct lighting, other than what reflects from the parking lot illumination.
Okay, Tops gave us permission to go with that, to halo the letters instead of the facelit.
It's like a backwash.
Yeah, yeah. The light comes from behind the letters. The face does not light up, just a halo, just like the Stop and Shop.
Just for the main sign.
Well, that covers the main sign, and none of the other signs will be illuminated except by the lighting from the parking lot?
Yes.
So you will be conforming with this sign?
Yes, everything will be the same that's there now.
Questions, folks?
Works for me.
Who owns Tops? Who owns Tops?
It's independently owned, actually.
Out of Buffalo, right?
They're actually independently owned. I'm from Stop and Shop. I'm still with Stop and Shop at this point, but they actually bought the company, the senior management team bought the company back in 2013. They're out of Buffalo, New York. They're coming down into the area. They bought Rhinebeck store, they bought Stop and Shop in Newport, also Wapanger Falls and the Grange and Carmel, Hanaford, so, with the FTC ruling and all that. So it was just a matter of the Ahold and Del Hayes, Hanaford merged together, and that's what happened, so.
And your intention is to make this sign change over in that two-day window of the 22nd to the 23rd of August? Other questions? And I, and I hope what I'm hearing on the street is correct, in that Tops intends to be sourcing as much produce locally as they can and to be supporting local agriculture.
That is true.
It's unrelated to the sign, but I just couldn't help but.
So far, everybody from Tops, from Buffalo coming down, oh, the whole area, they're very, they're very into, I mean, local, so we're working with them right now, we're just getting the store open, but they really want to come back and get involved with local, the local community, vendors and all that. So they are putting packages together at this point, just so we really get involved with that whole thing, so.
Good, and thanks also for continuing the people who are employed there.
Yes.
These are all positive signs.
They're very, very, very fair to all the people in the store, and.
All right, so that being said, this section I read, you say they've agreed to no internal lighting, these all, all right. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
No. No, I think it's a push-pull.
I think for the, for the record, Gretchen, for the record, I think the Planning Board has to say, Planning Board has reviewed the sign package proposed by Saxton on behalf of Tops Markets. The Board finds the proposed signs to be consistent with town design guidelines and recommends the sign permits, permit or permits be issued upon determination by the CEO that all.
The zoning board.
All conditions set forth by the zoning board of appeals in the matter of case 571. Be met.
Let me just get a vote for you. May I have a motion? Motion by Jesse, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. You get back to Ron.
That gives you the opportunity to go to Ron, and Ron can issue the permit. We have, Ron simply can't issue, the CEO can't issue a sign permit without the authorization from the Planning Board. Now, if you were coming in with a package that was that variance with what was up there, you wouldn't want to know about the next steps. Well, let's put it this way, the next steps would not be accomplished between now and, what, August 24th? Is that the date?
So Ron is in this week, tomorrow and Wednesday, not here Thursday, because he worked today because of this meeting. So Gretchen has the resolution, she'll share that with him. He doesn't get in until noon, so don't be waiting at nine o'clock. Okay. So thank you very much, and good luck. Welcome, welcome to Rhinebeck.
Yeah, you had some notes on there. You got it back, I don't know.
Is there anything else?
You're out of Skodek? Yeah, you are.
Anything else to come before us?
I'll drive by in a few minutes.
Anything else? May I have an important motion here?
Done.
Woody makes a motion to adjourn. Edna seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you all for hanging.